All right, good evening. Welcome to the July 9th, 2019 meeting of Manchester Town Council. Begin with a pledge of allegiance. So we are recording tonight, right? But we're not broadcasting live. That matters to any of you guys here. But for someone, for the poor six or seven people that are picking this up on YouTube in the future, we may not live tonight, do some technical difficulties. We do have a quorum. Councilman Dale Wilder is not here as well. That is our youth representative. First order of business is approval of the June 11 minutes. Should have a copy of those minutes. Electronically as well. Does anybody have any changes, updates, or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion we approve the June 11, 2019 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second and discussion. Are you now all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, two treasure items. We have receipt of the May 2019 treasures report.
I make a motion we accept the May 2019 treasures report.
I'll second that.
Motion second and discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then we have receipt of the June 2019 check register.
I make a motion we receive the June 2019 check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Mayor's report. A couple of things here. I know that a town administrator probably talked at length. We have something about the carnival, but it was another successful carnival season, given the weather challenges. I know that it seemed like we had a pretty violent storm roll through here just about every night. But, you know, thanks to all that took part at any level in that. Again, some announcements. We're repeating some of these, but we'll continue to try to get the message out on both recycling and yard waste. So we'll save it here and then push things out on the website and the Facebook as well. So we work with Hughes. Hughes will not pick up any recycling container if they see plastic bags. So in the past, you were allowed to. No plastic bags, no Walmart bags, that sort of thing. This is a challenge for me at my house as well. People go around to, kids go around their bedrooms with a Walmart bag and pull the recycling in there, and they whip the whole bag in the trash can, and I have to go dig it out and say something about it. But, yeah, just no plastic bags. They're just gonna leave it there because it does jam up their sorters. Yard waste is gonna continue every Friday through November. So as a reminder, we have a couple of different yard waste things. We have the larger pickups at the beginning and the end that the town does. The Fridays are Hughes. So we have to work with Hughes on what Hughes can do. So these types of yard waste consist of grass clippings, leaves, branches not to exceed three feet and/or four inches in diameter. Branches Hughes is requesting must be either one of two things. Either bundled and bundled together and tied, or at least in arm-sized piles, not in like a big mound. If it's a big mound, I think they're going to just move on. Or in some sort of bin, trash can, they can pick the whole thing up, dump it into their truck and move on. We haven't had as much issue with this, but just as a reminder, yard waste should not be mixed with mulch, dirt, trash, pet waste, anything like that, rocks. And then put that stuff out if you can on Thursday evening because you could start it pretty early on Friday. You can also use the craft, big paper bags as a container. A couple scholarships and awards. 2019 Charlotte B. Colette Memorial Scholarship winner was Hannah Yeady. 2019 Geraldine Burweger Memorial Safety Patrol Award winners Lauren Taylor and Lionel Collin Jr. So that is all I have. Oh, let's talk about MML attended as well as Councilwoman Howe, the MML conference last month. There's, yes, in June. Content was pretty good. I've talked to Steve about a couple of things, and I've talked to a couple of the planning and zoning committee members in terms of we as a council need to come up with a plan for how to deal with small cells. So proliferation of 5G, some communities have, this is kind of like the big, this is my big takeaway. We'll have some other small ones. We want to be ahead of the game in working with the companies. They come in with these small cell towers to say where we want them, what we want them to look like, how we want them incorporated in. If we don't have anything on the books, they really have free range to really do whatever they want. And that's, you know, they're constantly battling on the national level and state level to get more, like I say, like a wider range of options for them so they can do it quicker, cheaper. But it may not be in the best interest of us and our town and the aesthetics of where we'd want them placed. So I think that'd be a good project for planning and zoning to research best practices. MML certainly has some things, and I can work with them to get them the examples that were given to us, and that we can have them work and incorporate it into our code, provide a recommendation up to this group, hoping to get that taken care of in the next couple of months. So that's all I have. I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council, members of the community. Under pending items, the Sheets project, that's estimated to be about 40% complete. They are running ahead of schedule. The packaged goods store, estimate of 55% complete. The commercial lease for 3215 Long Lane, the town of Manchester and Carroll Community Foundation, also the Tree of Friends, that's moving forward. I think the folks have started moving some things from the old building into the new building, and there was an article in the Carroll County Times today, you know, explaining their move. So that's going very well. Three action items that's on the agenda, the BG&E gas transmission ordinance, that was introduced last month. Also, we have street repaving project bids that will be presented to you, and also the sale of a Massey Ferguson mower. Under code enforcement and rental housing, we have a meeting scheduled for July 19th in regards to the Roarball property. We are also in the process of preparing a notification letter to all landlords in regards to the administrative policy, to the water and sewer billing, which will begin October 1st of this year. Under miscellaneous items, the 100 recycling bins arrived on July 1st. We're in the process of assembling and distributing them along York Street. So that's going very well. We did receive an application for the upcoming grant process for the community parks and playgrounds grant, and I believe it's the mayor and council's thought to move forward again, applying for funding for the athletic field lighting. So I'll move forward on that. Our second annual, I guess, Bon the Hill event took place on June 26th. That went very well. Just a reminder, the sixth annual National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 6th, beginning at 6:00.
6:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
And also staff would like to thank Councilperson Miller for preparing lunch in the park, and also staff wants to thank Mayor Warner for giving employees off on Friday, July 15th to give us a long weekend. We appreciate that. As Mayor Warner alluded to, the carnival started out a very huge success Monday through Thursday, and then, of course, Friday and Saturday, we lost it to the weather. So that was a big hit for us. We had a, we had a good week going. Can't say enough about the volunteers coming in and helping the volunteers in the community. So, yeah, we just appreciate, the fire department appreciates everything that our community does for us. Any questions?
Couple of action items in there, Steve?
Yes, they're on the agenda. So each one is on the agenda.
Each one's on.
So we can, we can wait till we get to that point if it's okay.
Okay. Yep, let's do that. All right. Any questions for the town administrator? And now move on to the police chief. Police report?
Yes, sir. So for June of 2019, we responded to 120 calls for service. Thirty of the dispatch calls were in areas outside of our town. A lot of them were in the Hampstead area. We investigated only one Part 1 crime. It was for a larceny. It was a pretty extensive larceny, but we had cleared it by making two arrests. Some of the property has been recovered. We only criminally charged four adults this month, which is outstanding. Last month was the highest, as I stated before in the last report. It was 11. The criminal charges were for domestic assault, second-degree assault, and the two arrests for the theft, the larceny. Overdoses, the sheriff's office is reporting 194 overdoses year-to-date, 84 of which are heroin and fentanyl-related. There have been 23 fatalities. The municipalities throughout the county account for the following. Hampstead has five for the year. They had one this month, or actually in June, I should say. Manchester, we've had four. In June, we had one fatality. Sykesville, two. They've had one as well. Tawnytown, 13 for the year, one in June. Westminster, 60 for the year, eight in June. Mount Airy, nine for the year, and two in June. As I stated a while back, we did continue to increase traffic enforcement with a total of 472 total violations and stops. 384 were warnings, mostly to our town residents. Eighty-eight state citations were issued. As far as the carnival goes, I really gotta extend the thanks to the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. They gave me a team of deputies, and I gotta say, without them, we'd not, there was no way we would have pulled off the traffic control and safety for the parade to happen and the fireworks and all the people coming into the carnival. They were a big help. And that's about it. And I'm open for questions.
I think we had a random state trooper in there too, didn't we?
Oh, yes. We did have a random state. Yes, he did help. Yes, a sergeant. Yep.
So, Chief, I saw in the Carroll County Times within the last week, or maybe two, that overall heroin deaths are down in Maryland. Is that the same for Carroll County?
Twenty-three right now, I think is, it is down, but it's like, it's gonna be close. They go up and down.
Yeah.
It's just like June, it was a tough month in June.
Yeah.
There's a lot of times the municipalities won't get any. And then all of a sudden, we're all popping one, and we had a fatal, and I think there was nine fatalities in the month of June. So that's a, that's a high number.
Hopefully, overall, things continue to head in the right direction. You said any time a bad batch comes through and...
If they wanna make that dose hot, they're gonna make that dose hot, and unfortunately, you know, some of the citizens are gonna pay for it.
I noticed that by speaking to some other people, there were some issues in Baltimore County more than normal in this corridor coming straight up, same thing. So I'm sure it was a...
Well, you gotta remember, Route 30 runs from Pennsylvania Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue and north in Baltimore, straight up to Hanover, PA. It's what we call a straightaway. It's a straight shot for them.
Any other questions for the chief? I'll go into Director of Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and town council. Please see the water and wastewater data report. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that.
Rodney, do we have any flooding issues with some of the storms came in and...
I wasn't made aware of any.
I didn't hear it either. The new area that we fixed over...
Oh, at Eckert's? Eckert's is doing very well.
Okay.
Yeah, right after it was completed, it rained like cats and dogs, and I went out there and it was great. Yeah, we're really happy with our work, staying balls. All good?
Yeah.
Okay, for the DPW report on water, we had two water leaks on the public side located and repaired by our crew. One was on Meekle Drive, one was on Sutton Court. One, we had one water leak on the private side that was located also by our staff and repaired by our residents, by the resident, and that was on Granton Street. The Park Avenue tank rehabilitation, we're, we've been preparing to put out the bid, but we've been held up with MDE to attain a construction permit, so we're working on that closely with MDE, and we need to get an engineer on board to put their stamp on it. Working on that. At this point, we're planning on going out for bid the spring of 2020 and to be completed by the fall of 2020. On wastewater, we had zero backups on the private and the public side, or the public side. The wastewater treatment plant enhanced nutrient removal, ENR upgrade, and optional expansion. Currently, we have the document all ready to go out for the, sorry, request for proposals, RFP. I get my acronym is messed up. Anyway, the documents are all ready to go out. We're planning on going out with that this week. That goes to our five shortlisted engineering firms for their response to that. Maintenance roads, stormwater management. As Steve alluded, this FY20 street rehab project, we received bids in for the rehab and inspection services. That's one of your action items tonight. This includes proposed work on Washington Way, Halle Avenue, Westminster Street, Maiden Lane, and Bert Fowler Road. And I would also like to share that I made sure I put in the specs that it will be completed by October, the middle of October. Last year, it went into the winter, closer to the winter months, and we like it to be warmer when that, all that takes place. You get a better end product when it's warmer, I suppose, than colder. Parks and facilities, we had tree damage on two areas on Main Street, 317 Main Street and 3250 Main Street. That was cleaned up by our staff. And lastly, at two of our sewer pump stations, our staff put up new roofing to protect the electrical equipment, and that was at Park Avenue Estates and Westminster Street sewer pump stations. And that's all I have. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. Let's sit down.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Sorry. Any questions? Good?
Yeah, I think we're on the same page.
All right, thanks.
All right, move right along tonight. Next up is a discussion of ordinance 242 relating to BG&E and the gas transmission line renewal agreement. So as you may remember, last month, we introduced this ordinance. This essentially is an agreement with BG&E, whereas they, we continue to allow them to run gas lines and power as needed along and under our streets. So this is a 50-year agreement. Yes, we have one that's expired, so it's time to renew this. Any questions? Here none, do we have a motion to move forward with ordinance 242?
Make a motion we approve ordinance number 242 relating to the BG&E gas transmission line renewal agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second and in our discussion. Here none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, it is important, we have this agreement up here, it's like the original copy, so everybody that's here tonight has to sign before you leave. All right. Repaving bids. So both Steve and Rodney alluded to, we have bids for repaving streets, Washington Way, Halle Avenue, Westminster Street, storm drain repairs, Main Lane, Bert Fowler Road. Are these two separate? Steve, did you write this up so we were voting on this entire thing as one?
Yes, you do it as one.
Okay.
As you can see, the repaving, the companies came in. MT Laney, 302, 375, $302,000, $375,000. CJ Miller come in at 370,157. Also, we want an inspector on the job, and you can see WBCM came in at $7,000 and CDM Smith $20,000. So staff would be recommending going with MT Laney to do the repairs and WBCM to do the inspection service.
Okay.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So MT Laney, I know we've worked with before, but I'm just asking about WBCM only because of the huge difference in the price.
Yes, Rodney has worked with WCVM before.
I was just curious if you work with, I mean, I just wondered if we work...
Yeah, I worked with them, I brought them with me from Carroll County.
Okay.
We've worked with them a lot. They hire retired engineers to do inspections, and they were very reason...
They're a third of the price. I'm good with that. I just was, I just wanted to make sure it was somebody that we, you know, knew about. Okay.
So, somebody's gonna make a motion here. I think the motion is, Steve has written it like the third paragraph down there. Just name both companies in there.
All right. I make a motion we go with the staff recommendation to award the entire bid for repaving the streets that we have identified to MT Laney and to WBCM for the inspection services.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any other discussion? Further questions? Here none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we have the sale of the Massey Ferguson tractor. It's being replaced with a new zero-turn mower. So received two bids in. Messix for 5750. David Brathune for 6,000. Staff recommendation obviously is to accept the highest bidder.
Quick question. Somebody asked me how old the Massey Ferguson mower is. They were just curious.
I can't answer that.
Can't answer it.
I can, I can go real quick and...
No, we were just, they were just asking. Not a big deal. He was just curious. That's okay.
I'm going to say...
No, you don't have to. He said it's fine. He was just curious.
Was it 2000?
I was gonna say 2008, but...
Yeah, I was thinking 2000, I agree with you, 2008, 2009. Actually, we had problems with that tractor from the get-go. We had problems with the hydraulics on the unit. We had trouble with the mower deck. Yeah, there was a lot of issues with that tractor.
The older ones are built better. He knows somebody has a 1947. I said, well, that's built a little better than 2008 evidently.
Do we have a motion on the sale of the tractor?
I make a motion we go with the staff recommendation to accept the bid from David Brathune in the amount of $6,000 for the sale of the Massey Ferguson tractor.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second and in our discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Cumbrance lists. Kelly, you wanna maybe just give us a quick highlight on this so I don't mess it up?
So for FY19, we went over the things, the projects that we were not able to complete, and we would like to be able to do it in FY20. So in the general fund, there were some items with zoning, the training for 4,000, and the reimbursement to the boards for 4,000. Also, the warmer lettering for 4,000. As you know, we wanted to update the stone every five years with names to be added. Unfortunately, our committee dwindled down. We now have a new committee. They're working on it, and we're gonna shoot for November of 2020 to do that. So we'd like to encumber that money, so we have it sitting there, so when the time comes to chisel the names, we have that available. We do have a savings account set aside for that as well, but I'd like to do that. And of course, the ADA sidewalks around the pavilion, we're going to do, I believe, one big project, or as much as can be done to get the sidewalks, Christmas Street Park. And in the water and sewer fund, we had monies budgeted for a new water meter reader. We have it in FY20 as well, so we wanted to actually get both of them together, so they're the same style, brand, year, and so forth. So that's why we're encumbering from last year to this year. So that's nutshell.
So for everybody in the audience, essentially, money that was in last year's fiscal 19 budget that ended June 30th, that wasn't spent, that we are bringing over. Do we have a motion to encumber the funds as submitted from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 20?
I'll make a motion that we encumber the funds listed from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any other discussion or questions on the line items or process? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Questions and comments from the community? I know we have a couple people signed up, and then we'll get to some others that didn't sign up but wish to speak. Four folks from Mindy about speed. Do you guys wanna talk together, individually, elect a spokesperson? Yeah, if you don't mind. No, I'm sure you're, I'm saying a lot of the same points, so...
Tom Kirk from 2571 Mini Drive. I was here a couple of months ago, and we are just still experiencing a lot of speeding on that road. There's a lot of traffic on that road. There's probably about over 6,000 cars a month on that road going back and forth. Majority of them are coming from Southwest, and they're just using us as a thoroughfare to 27th. And I've recently retired, and I've been out there in the morning a lot of times. And they, you know, I'm standing out there on my front lawn and almost in the street, and they're just, I mean, they just go right around me. They don't, they don't slow down, they just go. And, you know, we're just really, really, we have a lot of, we have some, you know, small children on that road. I have my grandchildren come every other weekend, which is five kids, and I don't feel safe for them to be out near them. We have dogs in the community, and it's just not a safe thing. I would like to start out, and like I had said two months ago, to have a stop sign at the corner of Mindy and Patricia. There's a stop sign at Patricia when coming up from the court, but there's, that's the only stop sign. So the cars from Southwest are coming up the street, and they're getting a momentum, and they're just high-tailing up that road, and there's just no stopping them. So if there's a stop sign there, that would at least slow them down so they wouldn't have the speed to catch up to where they're going. And I would say the average is 40, 45 miles an hour. I mean, I have seen this, I have witnessed it, my neighbors have witnessed it. And again, it's in the morning, and again, in the afternoon when people are coming home. You know, we're not having any sidewalks, there's no safe place to walk, so you have to walk in the street. And, you know, I don't think that we're being out of, you know, being, you know, crazy as far as asking for a stop sign. I think that would be a legitimate ask. I don't know if that's gonna solve the problem. If not, then I would like to go with, you know, like this, you know, a speed kind of thing, like not a speed bump, but a slowed, a slow down, and maybe at least two paces on the road, the beginning of the road of Mindy, and then further up. You know, it's just really, really getting out of hand, and it's not getting any better, and it's just getting worse. And we're just really, really afraid for our kids, our animals, our pets. And, you know, it's, to me, it's a very, very simple solution. And I would really, really appreciate something being done about it. I went around last night and got 15 signatures from people on our road, which is, which is basically most of the residents on that road. No one turned me down. Everyone was saying, please go for it, let them know what happened. So I had this, I had this signature page, and I also have a signature, a page that has my name and information on it if you wanna contact me. But I'd appreciate having a copy of this before I leave.
Chief, can you give us a rundown of what you did, what we've done in the last...
I don't have the numbers with me. We'd have to go back on the tape. We did do calculations up there. The traffic is astronomical. It's more of a flow than most neighborhoods, I will tell you that. We, we had to sign where it looked like it wasn't capturing speed, but we were doing it, and it was 5%. I forgot what the numbers were, but you had 5% of the population of traffic was, was over that, I would say, range of speeding. That comfortable zone, 10 miles over, 5 miles over, something like that. The guys have been doing enforcement up there, but as soon as they're gone, they're, they know we're gone. We've been on the app, they spotted us, they send it out on the app that there's an officer sitting up there. We've even tried playing games with them. We'll go pull one Main Street, and within five minutes, there's traffic. I forgot what the app's called.
Ways.
What is it?
Ways.
Ways. We're up there. They mark us. It is a problem. It is, it is a lot of traffic, and I think that's the biggest thing that you're seeing. There has been a tremendous traffic increase within the last year.
Right.
On Mindy. So I think that's the biggest thing that you're seeing.
You have to get a mic.
Yeah, you might come up here just so we can, we can record it. The gallery's not miked yet. Yeah, you can come on up and just, we'll make it a pretty conversational discussion. So, Mr. Kirk, I, I can appreciate, I live at the other end here of the neighborhood, essentially, off Southwest.
Can I leave this and get a copy of it, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Kelly will help you out. So... Yeah, I think this is something that's on our radar, that those of us, I think, that have been here, I know you've been around, and have had other concerns with some of the people here, that we can't really, we don't, it just doesn't work fast. I know it seems simple, but if every time we, like, somebody said, oh, hey, something's happening here, and then we just like, okay, well, you know, stop sign, speed on, stop sign. We have to gather information, and Chief says, let's just get the thing out there, And then we just like, okay, well, you know, stop signs, speed humps, speed on stop sign. We have to gather information. The chief says, let's just get the thing out there. Let's do some enforcement. Let's count. Let's figure out why and then assess the best way to move forward and then, and then find a way to get.
I started this two months ago, so it seems that it's not being taken seriously.
It may seem that way. It's not that way. If you wanna catch up off, off, after this, I'm happy to talk and kind of explain, I think, where, where things could go. But, you know, I'm a fan of stop signs. I'll say that. But I don't know that we can put them everywhere all the time. It hardly ever happens fast. So for the chief, did the trailer, do we use the trailer up there or the?
We use a trailer up there. I'm gonna order these new solar signs. We may permanently put one up there. That has a few more things that that sign can do.
Would it be similar to the one that we have out here?
A little bit better. It's a little bit better.
Have improved those.
Yep.
So the, the trailer we had it up there, it was counting and then it was registering speeds. Was it displaying the speed as well?
Yeah, it calculates the time. It calculates the, the, the speed zone of what they're traveling in and.
I mean, so like, I, I think the trailer, unless it's lost that functionality due to its age. You know, as you, as you drive up on it like this one up here, it's gonna say like, okay, you're going, you know, thirty-nine, now you're going thirty-six, thirty-three. So by displaying it, it affects behavior. But it also may, depending on when we, you choose to capture that speed. Somebody might be going forty miles an hour. By the time we capture them, I'd be going thirty-one. But if you, if it doesn't display the speed.
Nah, somebody's going forty miles. The only time that camera, that trailer will get tripped up is if I'm running behind you. And you happen to be doing thirty.
Yeah.
And I'm doing forty, you may get a seventy mile an hour clip. But if you're running single, it's, it's pretty pinpoint.
Well, I'm probably not saying this the right way. So. I think the trailer has the functionality to not display the speed that the person's going.
Yes.
But it can capture it.
Yes.
So that we have the data.
Yes.
So I think we get different results that we've seen in the past. If we leave it someplace for two weeks. We display the speed one week and we don't display the speed one week, we get different results.
We can run them covertly.
Right.
Yes.
So with respect to Mindy, the time we had it out there, do you know if we had the speed being displayed or not displayed?
Both.
Okay.
I had the, I had the whole spreadsheet, but I, I wouldn't.
You still haven't.
I don't have it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's fine. I just wanna piggyback on what Tom said. So I'm Speed Jones. I live at two five nine three. So I've been on Mindy Drive since ninety-six. And the biggest, so I'm trying to use our situation to what I see was a situation in Whispering Valley. So if you go, I guess it's down Westminster Street and go across twenty-seven, you go down Keating Courts to your right, they have speed humps off that hill. So I think we're try, I mean, Tom, we're starting with a stop sign. I think, you know, we can put down, we can put speed limit signs and I've had the slow down speed signs. It's just white noise anymore. So I think it needs to be, be beyond just the speed limit sign or, or a police officer sitting there. It becomes. Probably when they built that development, when they finished Nevada and, and all those, Washington Way and stuff on, on both sides, probably should have had something there at that time. So I, like Tom, well, he's two months in, so I feel like we're, we're, you know, we're probably seven years late, right? I mean, because it's, you know, these guys, they have the grandkids, but I have little guys. My wife drives a school bus. She drives for F and S who used to be Shafers. So, I mean, she's, she's in town. She's, she's driving, um, driving the bus for, you know, this middle school, elementary school and high school. So she sees it all. So I just think we need a model like that. Like, I don't know dollar-wise, funding-wise, like what that, I mean, a stop sign's gonna help. I think coming up the street from Washington, but coming from Burt Fowler, it's not going, it's not gonna slow them up until they get probably around the corner. So for me, for my.
Which way do they go faster?
Um, probably up the road. So from Washington, from, from Washington.
From southwest, right?
From southwest, yes. From southwest.
They're using it as a bypass.
Right. I mean, that's what they're doing.
It's a same through.
Well, and they do the same thing on Washington Way. They do the same thing. They go cut up through there and they go up to.
What, what's caused, if it's more traffic now, what's caused it to be more traffic than it was six months ago?
What I've been told and what I've been seeing, I've been out in my personal vehicle. I've sat and watched. The, ever since the Sheets project started, the backup for the summertime traffic has increased past Hallie. That was never the case. There's a light issue there where the construction workers are triggering the light. And the lights are controlled down in Hanover, Maryland. And even though there's no traffic coming out of there, sometimes you'll get the construction crew. They'll trigger that light. It sets it off and the lights longer. That subsequently causes the backup. So then everybody starts what they do as I call the schooltime traffic. They start cutting through the neighborhoods. And that could be part of the problem.
Well, for anybody to cut up Mindy.
There's a lot of bypass traffic now going through the neighborhoods.
I mean, would it have to be essentially all?
Residents. Are they, are most of them residents?
There's a lot of PA people. There's a lot of, a lot of PA people. There are a lot of residents.
I'm just trying to think through it. Which, what would be the scenario where somebody from PA would use Mindy?
To get to twenty-seven.
Coming up Route thirty and then maybe.
It's off the whole high school section.
Cut up twenty-seven and take twenty-seven to Westminster, Westminster Freidinger, Freidinger to, uh, third, or Hallie, Hallie to the light now.
Through Whispering Valley to, to, to the light.
Well, the other way as well, it could be up, before the bridge was out on Cape Horn. So you could come up Cape Horn and cross Patricia and kinda come up Charmel that way. So, I mean, you can say all that, like, that's fine. And the Sheets thing just happened in the last couple months, but I've been living there for twenty-three years. It's not, it's been since the new developments there. So we could say it's PA got, you know, traffic coming back and forth, but it's the residents that live down beyond Mindy Drive. That are, that are, that's, that, in my opinion, are more of the problem for as much. It's not a Mindy Drive thing. So, so southwest is the same way. If you're coming up and that, walking up and down southwest from the top from Mindy down, it's just, it's a raceway there as well. So I don't wanna be selfish and say, yeah, we need something on Mindy Drive. You probably need something there as well. It's, it's just, again, I don't know how, I was talking, talking to these guys and this is my first meeting, so I don't know how many other residents or community. People from the community are coming and talking about their streets. Like, I think, to me, this is, to us, it's a big deal. I mean, I got little guys. It's.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you, I, I don't like advertising this, but I don't know how big you think the law enforcement team is. They are going from one area to the next and they're banging down fifteen to sixteen citations a day. Plus handling calls, plus handling community complaints. And they're going from one hot area to the other. And there's probably about ten hot areas in the town of Manchester.
That's fine. I, I think that's great. I just think it needs to be permanent, right? And the only thing you're gonna get permanent is either stops on or speed humps.
So, some of the considerations, like, we have to work with some people to do anything because, like, we can't. Logistically, we can't put a, a stop sign to speed home every hundred yards, right? I think that there's, there's a number, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't, don't quote me on this. I'm just talking. There's a number of barriers you can have between where emergency services are coming to and getting to anybody. So therefore, if we put two on every street, it no longer works. So we can do something someplace, but then you're always trading something off.
Do we know the model how that, how the Whispering Valley, that whole Westminster Street, Keating Court got those speed humps there? Do we, I mean, that's probably been a while, so I don't know if anyone remembers.
That's been a good while, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a while, but again, there obviously was put in for the same reason that we're talking about because the cars are probably coming off twenty-seven and going up the hill and probably down the hill.
There was some things going on when that, those two neighborhoods first joined up. I mean, this is going back fifteen years.
At least.
Yeah, it's been a while. No, I know they've had.
That's when you started coming.
I mean, I think, I think, I think, and, and obviously, I, I am one of the people, I will tell you, that live in the new neighborhood. So, but I think part of the problem is twenty-five years ago, none of those cars were there, which was great because ten people passed through a day 'cause you lived there and that was it. You know? But, I mean, I get it. I mean, it's a lot of people coming through there, but we had the same thing. I remember Hallie had issues last year. My neighborhood had issues last year. It's like. And I get it. I mean, I just don't know how to make people.
Six thousand cars is fine, as long as they're going twenty miles an hour.
Right.
If that's fine.
But I'm saying, unfortunately, the more people you have, the more people just look at anything else, people are gonna just not, not give it their supposed.
What's gonna happen? We all know.
The number one complaint we get though, right, is, I mean, it's streets, it's neighborhood safeties. It's, it's, everyone's speeding through here. People aren't running, they're running stop signs. There's, there's a school bus here.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, I, I mean, everybody can tell their story and I'll just tell a quick one. And when my wife was driving the bus, I got the kids on the bus in the morning and I used to double park my car on the, on Mindy Drive, which is totally illegal, but there's nothing you can do, right? What can you do when you have your kids on the school bus stop and the cars, you know, and again, cell phones, like, we can go through that. We can make this bigger. Nobody's paying attention. Everybody's distracted in their cars. And that's the problem. You could be walking down the road and still get run over if guys going twenty 'cause he's not paying attention. So I'm just saying, it, it's, it's a problem. And I don't, again, if we're, I can't think that we're the only street in, in Manchester or whatever, in Carroll County that's having this issue. I just don't know if anybody's bringing it to your attention.
Yeah, it, we want you to bring it to our attention. That's it. Because it helps, as the chief is saying, we're always trying to figure out, what, what are those ten or twelve hotspots right now? And how do we prioritize our time and the police time to do the best that we can? And then can we, can we work in some, some physical barriers? Slash, do the physical barriers cause other problems? They always cause another problem too. When you put a stop, I live at a stop sign along this whole route. All day long, it's just running through the stop signs. So then you get near accidents because somebody's expecting the guy to stop. Or somebody's, I, I, there's no sidewalks where I live either. So somebody's walking a dog and somebody from, throw her, cause she says, well, this neighborhood blows through there. Right? And then, you know, they yell at them because they're walking a dog in the street. It's, it's kind of the same story everywhere. I can't tell you, I, I, I won't name the person, but they do live back where we're talking about. They sent me one email. This is going back about three years, I think. And they were saying the same thing, you know, they, they live up, up a little bit near one of the intersections. Everyone's speeding here. So every time it happens, I kind of collect this all together and send it over to the chief and say, here's the collection of, of complaints, you know, slash concerns. That, that have come in. Well, that person ended up getting a ticket, same person, for speeding between where that section six and seven are. Cause you have the area where they're kind of back there and then it goes down the hill, where Mindy comes in and then there's no sidewalk. When they sent the second email to me complaining about us running radar in that area, they call that area the thoroughfare. So we shouldn't be running in. And I was like, whoa, other, other people live there.
Right.
Right? And other people have their kids riding their bikes. There's a bus stop. There's Mindy Drive. There's people walking dogs.
But that wasn't their area. You're missing it.
It wasn't. So we do get a lot of, and, and this will happen, right? So when people complain, we increase enforcement, we increase enforcement. We get somebody from two streets up that complained previously.
So I have a, a kind of twofold question. Chief, and I hate to put you on the spot, but in regards to Washington, because it is kind of a similar street. Where you go a, a stretch, you have a stop sign and then you go uphill. So when you're coming down, you can, you can get some speed coming down Washington to get to Southwestern. Has that stop sign there seemed to have made a difference in regards to speeding?
Stop them for going through the stop sign.
Which is what I kind of assumed that you were gonna say.
Stop signs really do not impact speed. It does, because they're going, just like a gentleman said, they'll come off the stop sign and they'll speed up the hill. That's not, it, it's, it's part of a calming solution, but it's not the total package.
I mean, I think if the same people that are not speeding are gonna stop, same people that are flying through are gonna barely tap their brakes, look and keep on rolling, cause they assume nobody's coming out of Patricia.
And listen, I, I don't want, I won't make any mistake about this. We're pretty aggressive with it. And I'll give you an example. One gentleman, I will say, on camera disappointed us. We had a chronic speeder. The person was definitely a recidivist. And we got his tag number. We got him ID. We conducted it just like we did a criminal investigation. I discussed the issue with the state's attorney's office. We wrote that individual tickets. It went to court. Then our main witness, who was the complaintant to us, worked it out in the hallway with him and nothing happened. And the judge was gonna throw the book at him. We just had another one with a bus driver. That worked out. The bus driver ID'd him, the people ID'd him. That was in Crossroads Road, Mayor. We tracked them down, fifteen hundred dollars in fines. And nobody backed off of that case. So if you get a tag number and you have a chronic speeder and you're willing to come to the table with us. We will follow it up, just like any investigation.
Can I ask what the process is for?
Gotta get the microphone.
We're trying to.
Gotta get the microphone.
I, I, I'll repeat the question if you don't mind. Just, so, only because we're trying to be recording it and you won't be on mic, so. Well, I'll, I'll repeat the question. I think that, the, um, so Mr. Kirk had asked what the process is for probably adding a stop sign or adding a speed up. So the, the process, it would be a vote of the council. Realistically, the, the council is gonna rely on, they're gonna wanna gather information. I don't wanna speak for everybody here. But the council usually is gonna wanna gather information and then talk to Public Works. How is this gonna affect? The o, the overall, because if, if we, we have to be careful of a couple things. We can't, or we try not to, we try to be very judicious. I'm gonna say this the right way. And not funnel problems into one area. So if we were to say, okay, let's, let's over. Put more things on these streets, but then create, take all the stop signs off another street. Well, we've kind of just, rather than having people travel streets, we fund all the one areas. We try, we, we do consider that. The other thing is, I live at one of the stop signs that was being discussed by Melinda. I, I could, a stop sign's not gonna make you feel any better. I don't know if I care if it's there or not, because now this is every truck that comes through there in the middle of the night. You hear it brake and then you hear it accelerate. The other thing that happens is people run it and then I feel irritated. Everyone looks at the stop signs mad when people run those stop signs. And then we get the, the ninety-five Ford Mustangs come through at eleven o'clock at night and they stop. And then they squeal wheels all the way, you know.
Perfect solution, but I do personally, from my personal experience, think they do help. And it gives another law enforcement tool, because I.
It is a tool.
You know, I, when I was with the sheriff's office, I were, you know, some of my sheriff guys said, like, they're blowing stop signs in my neighborhood and they would set up and they would get some people. So I, I think it is a tool. I think it's worth seriously exploring.
So to get back to the second part of the question that I have, and, and I don't know that this is even optional. Could there be a temporary stop sign to see if it improves?
It takes, we have to change. Yeah, cause we list, we have to list all the stop signs. And otherwise, they're not enforceable.
I didn't know if it was something that we could do like on a trial basis to kind of see.
There's nothing to say you can't do it and undo it, but we probably also shouldn't be in the business of like doing them and undoing them every other month, I think. If we're gonna, and I'm not against doing them at all. I'm saying if we're gonna do it, do it. But gather all the information, consider what, how much it's gonna help. What's the trade-off? And if you guys wanna do it, do it.
I wanna do it.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, yeah. Buck Kelly, I live at twenty-five seventy-five Mindy. Lived there thirty-three years. I don't have any kids anymore and don't have a dog anymore. But I think twenty-five seventy-five seems to be about what the speed is on that road. That speed awareness thing sat on my lawn for a month and I'd watch people roll up, see the thing, slow down. And the minute they got past it, go. We could use speed awareness risers where you have fire hydrants. It would mark the fire hydrant. It'd mark the road. Be easy enough to see for the snowplow and whatever. And that would slow it down more than anything. Enforcement just doesn't work. I mean, if they come out, they sit there for a while. It's good for a day or so. Won't be good next week. Won't be good tomorrow. You need something that's kind of permanent. A stop sign seems to be a suggestion and not a law around there. Cause they blow through that stop sign at Southwestern and Mindy like it's not even there. It just doesn't happen. Speed awareness riser would be the way to go. If they'd mark them right about where the fire hydrants were, it's two spots on the street, beginning of the street, about halfway down. Slow that traffic down pretty good. Be much more helpful. I think the chief will agree. You can't reinforce that. You can't get out there enough to do something.
You can't. And like I said, as soon as you pull away, I don't care where you go in the country. It's the same thing everywhere.
Yep.
They go back to their normal routine.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't mean we don't, we, we have to enforce. We have to be out there as much as we can.
Kids in the neighborhood now and there's no side.
Yeah, no, I know. I knew you guys were out there. And, and we do have to. The chief and I have had a lot of conversations about, about this and about traffic enforcement philosophy and, and.
We have a stop sign at the bottom of the street there, Patricia. Be nice for Tom, cause he's the next house up. But for the people at the top of the street like speed, it's not gonna help.
Yeah, I know. It doesn't do it.
Blow down the street in the afternoon like it's not even there.
So, we kind of talk about the traffic enforcement being like, like mosquito abatement. Right? You, you, you can go in and you can like have an effect.
Yard, but next week it's.
Yeah. You, you get a good rain, they're all back. But there are still, we do still need to address, like the chief, they call it recidivists. Like, we have some in our neighborhoods that are traveling through other neighborhoods that are, that are chronic, extreme speeders. And we do need to, to address those. I think we have a lot of people that are kind of unaware that they're doing it. They're, they get in their car, they know, well, it takes me twenty-five minutes to get to work. If it takes me twenty-seven minutes to get to work, then I'm late. And they get in and, you know, the cars are all smooth, the roads are smooth, and they just go. They go however fast they feel. Their ability allows them to drive.
Right.
When you're standing in your yard, it looks crazy. You're like, how could they possibly go that fast on the street? I think a lot of people fall into that neighborhood. And that's what I think we hear when you pull them over, right? They don't, they don't really feel like they're doing anything dangerous. But they are.
Well, we do all do it. I mean, you do it in other neighborhoods that aren't yours.
Right.
So it's not a problem in another neighborhood.
Yeah.
But I think a speed awareness riser makes you slow down, cause you know you're gonna hit it and bounce up and you gotta slow down.
You guys have any opinions on?
And you know, the other, and look, I lived here too since nineteen ninety-three and I'm gonna call it how it is. Right there, I told you, three hundred and eighty-four warnings. You know what most of them are? Your neighbors. Your neighbors. And, and I mean, the officers have been called names. They get yelled at. They do it again and again and again. The town gets zero dollars for a traffic ticket. It actually costs the town. The town gets zero dollars for a traffic ticket, it actually costs the town money to issue a traffic ticket, 'cause we have to pay the officers overtime to go to court. We get zero revenue, the state gets it, the town of Manchester gets nothing.
And to participate in the system.
Excuse me?
And to participate in the system.
Yes.
With the electronic ticketing, yeah, so, yeah, we're not making money.
There's a lot that goes into it, but a lot of the warnings are our residents, a lot of them.
Well, barriers are the way to go, put a barrier up, speed bump, speed awareness riser, it's gonna slow them down.
Okay. Anybody else wanna speak on this?
Can I ask a question? He said, speed awareness risers, are I, okay. Okay.
I think they're like shorter and s- more square.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, traffic calming, kinda?
A lot of people put crosswalks on top of them.
Yeah, the state of Pennsylvania has started to use that, basically, too, they're called speed tables, and you will, you will feel it when you get up on top, and you will feel it when you drop off, yeah.
Um, we talked about that before, remember, is that gonna be, remember, we talked about plowing and things, remember, we discussed that?
That's another thing we have to take into consideration, you know, uh.
Plowing and emergency services.
If you recall back when we had the problem on Hallie, uh, we brought different types of temporary speed, speed humps in here.
But if you put it where the, uh, hybrids are.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
I, I agree, what we brought in was, was temporary, they would have to be removed in the wintertime, you'll, you'll plow them right off. Uh, you also have to worry about drainage in, in, uh, when it rains real hard, to get that water off the road, to get it over into the gutter, so you leave it away from the gutter pan as much as you can. But if we go, let's say we use temporaries, the temporaries would have to be yanked in the wintertime. Now, the speed table, where you come up on it and then you travel for, and then you come back down, that would stay there, but we'd have to have some type of identification for our guys plowing the snow that they're there. Anything, anything small, there, it's just gonna rip right off when you plow snow, end of story, I mean, it, it just happens. The ones in, the ones on Westminster Street, actually, Westminster Street used to have two. When we repaved Westminster Street, because people were flying right over them, I mean, it didn't matter, we only put one back. And if you stay there, you'll see them, they'll fly back over them again, you know, so, but.
Are they used to going faster over that one that's on the back hill of Westminster?
Excuse me?
How fast do people go over the one that's on?
It doesn't really phase them that much, I mean, I've seen them go over it, you know, I mean, maybe chief can.
Probably depends on the color, I guess, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but, um.
You can't go over what he's talking about fast.
No, those speed tables, uh.
Yeah, yeah, you can't do it.
State of Pennsylvania's used them, and like I said, I, I've been across them, and you can.
It'd be air bath.
You can feel them, I mean, they, they throw you up probably about six or eight inches. You get a, but, and then when you come back down, so, but, I, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what a, yeah, I, I don't know of any in Carroll County, I don't know of any, you know.
We have one in Ocean City on, um, St. Louis Avenue, and people had to, they had to put, like, arrows, 'cause I was one of them who didn't see it.
And you nailed it.
Yeah.
You'll find car parts on the other side some of the ones.
Well, and when it's cruising week, all the old cars, so they put one of those in to stop the people from doing that, and then now there's arrows, and that has become very effective. So, I would say that that would be good, I'm not sure if a stop sign three houses up will do anything, because then they're gonna just go on up, but put one of those things up, that going up that hill, and they'll have to slow down.
And councilperson Howe, how's, how has that affected, the one in Ocean City, how has that affected emergency services?
Um, none that I, I know of, but I can, I can, um, ask the fire department about it, uh, and they, they did put a walkway across the top of it, too. Uh, and it's, it's not on a cross street, but it stopped the cars from going back during cruising week, but I, I'll check on it and, and ask them how it is, but that's the only one they have in Ocean City, back on St. Louis Avenue.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a shame Dale's not here tonight, um, there's a couple guys on planning and zoning, though, that have a wealth of knowledge about, about traffic remediation and, and traffic engineering. Um, so I, I, I would say as an action point, so we, we can move on, I think everybody's, wants to find a way to make this better, and make all of our streets better. Everybody should go up to, to this spot, and if you have an idea, let's talk about that idea. I also think maybe we, um, pull in like a, like a Bob Graham, and have him, ask him to, to take a look at this situation, this street, in detail, and see if we can get some, some of his thoughts on, on what to do.
And I'll check with the town of Ocean City to see what the cost was, how effective it is, and if it bothers, uh, emergency services, any, I'll check into them this week.
Since my name's on this, would I be notified as far as what's happening?
Um, well, it's not, there's, there's, nothing's a secret, I can, I can tell you that, but we don't have a, a notification process to say, every time I have a conversation with them, I'll con, y- y- you know what I mean? Like, I think we're all pretty easy to get a hold of, um, I think if, if we were, is there a way that we can notify? I, I don't know, I don't know what the process is, if, if something's gonna happen, and we, we, so, I, I don't want, I don't want to not communicate.
I can put them on the email list for the agenda.
Okay, is that good?
Well, I mean, yeah, but I just, to be perfectly honest, I've called to the town office and been up there in the past two weeks, probably three or four times, and I have not, you know, I asked to speak with you, and I have not been notified, I have not been called back, and it was just a little disturbing.
I need you to hear the mic, it's for recording purposes, I'm sorry.
So you came to our office and?
Yes, I came, I came.
You requested it, I, I believe?
Yes.
I spoke to him probably about a month, um, two months ago, before you came to the last meeting, at least.
And I've, I've been up, uh, two times since then in the past week, and I was no, I was told that, uh, you were given the, a message or whatever, and that, um, I was, you know, just to be patient, and it's been two weeks, it was two weeks on Monday.
You came up two times the past week and asked to talk to me?
Yes.
I didn't get the, I mean, you didn't speak to me.
I, I, no, I talked to one of the secretaries at the, at the office where you pay your bills, I don't know what her name is.
Just for the record, though, if it's, to do a speed sign, it takes an ordinance, and ordinance is prepared, it's introduced one meeting, and it's not acted on until the following meeting, and then it has to lay for twenty days before it's effective. I think you asked that question earlier, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, and that's fine, that's fine, but I, I just, you know, I just said, you know, I just asked to speak with the mayor, just kinda like a one-on-one thing, to kinda see where we were since I was here a few months ago. And I wasn't, I, I never received a phone call back or.
Yeah, I, I get a, a good handful of, like, request to call numbers and stuff, I, I call a lot of them, I leave a lot of messages, uh, I can't.
I just, I haven't received anything, and it has been two weeks.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't, generally, I will get in touch with people if they ask, but I'm also not, you know, like, sitting here just kinda waiting.
I know, I understand that, I understand that, but, you know, I've lived here for thirty-three years, and I've paid a lot of taxes, and, you know, I just kind of, uh, expected some kind of notification somehow of somewhere, so, I appreciate it.
Okay, my direction.
I need your email.
Is to contact Bob Graham, reach out to Bob Graham, and, and, you know, give him an idea of what we have, see if he can come up with any, any ideas. In the meantime, of course, as Kelly said, to put in a stop sign, that has to be an ordinance change, the way our code is written, uh.
How about for the speed pump?
It does not.
Does it not require, so that's something we could do if we all agreed on it right, as, right away?
So then, also, I'm gonna wait for councilperson Howe to get back to me.
I'll do that tomorrow.
In regards to emergency services, um.
And also maybe speak to Dale when he comes back, too?
I'll have, uh, the director of public works possibly reach out to, uh, M.T. Laney to get a rough idea of a cost for a, a, uh, there could be a spec out there somewhere for a speed cable, so, okay. Okay, that's fine.
I need your email address before you leave. Can you put your email address on here next to you?
Everybody good? Was there anybody that came in to speak on something, um, not Mindy Drive? Didn't get a chance to sign up? Any, anyone?
You got it, very good, perfect.
Hearing none, we will move on to committee reports, councilwoman Smith.
Um, we did not have a meeting, um, but the only thing I wanted to say, it has nothing to do with meeting, but everybody that I've spoken to about the carnival and the parade, everybody was really happy, other than the weather and the parade weather. Um, but I think everything went really, really well, I heard a lot of good things about the carnival itself, about how everything was handled with the police, so I was very pleased to hear that.
Councilwoman Miller.
Uh, um, just to touch base, the Paint the Town Patriotic, we had one entry again, the guy, the, the Dairy Business Center, so they're our winners. Um, the, in all honesty, though, they do a fantastic job of decorating for the Fourth of July week and screws up the town. Um, additionally, we are rapidly approaching our fundraiser that we're working on collaboratively between Haley's Wish for inclusive playground equipment at Christmas Tree Park, and the fire department, um, that is Friday, August twenty-third, it is a designer bag bingo. Um, I know they're still looking for sponsors, people who are willing to fill a bag or donate things that could be used as store prizes, that kinda thing. Um, information is available at the town hall, it's available on Facebook, the town channel, it, it's out there a lot of places, um, but if you have any questions, please feel free to contact someone at the town hall, they'll be able to, to get in touch with you. Um, and we're hoping to raise a lot of money for our playground.
Very good, councilwoman Puchelli.
The next MAMA meeting is July eighteenth at noon at Dutch Corner, and for those of you who are car buffs, you might remember that MAMA sponsored a car show for quite some time, and then they weren't sponsoring a car show, well, the car show is now back. August eleventh at the North Carroll Senior Center, what time would that be, guy?
It's be eleven to three.
Eleven to three.
Sunday, Sunday show.
Very exciting that it's back, that would be it.
Okay, councilwoman Howe.
Um, a few activities at Charlotte's Quest, the family campout is at four PM on Friday, July twenty-sixth, to eleven AM on Saturday, July twenty-seventh. Um, it's the first overnight family campout in the park, uh, get a rare look at the park after dark, observe nocturnal creatures, catch fireflies, toast smores, stargaze using the telescopes under the guidance of Westminster Astronomical Society, and watch a movie on the lawn. Uh, sleep under the stars in your tent and wake up to donuts and bagels for breakfast. Tent camping only with a limit of five people or immediate family per site, thirty dollars per site, and you can get a seven dollar discount if you're a member. Also, on August the tenth, there is a re-market flea market at the nature center from eight AM to twelve PM. If you're interested to come and shop, or if you'd like, you can reserve a table for twenty-five dollars, and those are the only things that have happened during the summer.
A quick question about the campout, I've had a couple people ask, do you have to camp out, or can you come for the evening's events and leave, like, come for the movie and the, the events, but not stay overnight in a tent?
Um, nobody's ever asked that question.
That would be called a lock-in.
I, I don't know, I mean.
I think that's what it was like, but I will find out, I'll check with them, um, and see.
All right, thank you.
I'll check right now.
All right, um, anything else or any questions for tonight? All right, a couple, uh, quick announcements, uh, tomorrow night, that, that I missed earlier, tomorrow night, there's a walk with the commissioner for District Ones, Commissioner Wance will be at Cape Horn, seven PM. Uh, I'm gonna try to make it over to that, so if anybody would like to, I think they walk around Cape Horn once, and you can, uh, try to get your, your concerns heard by the county commissioner. And I also wanna thank councilwoman, woman Miller for her work on the, the Banner City, I do have our, our Banner City thing, so Manchester was awarded the Banner City designation, the game of two thousand and nineteen, so thank you for working on that. National Night Out is Tuesday, August sixth, and the next council meeting is Tuesday, August thirteenth, right here. Anything else for this group? Remind, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, I'll second the motion.
All right, the papers say aye?
Aye.
All right, good night.